Going to call this workshop to order. Mr. King, would you, uh, prepare please?
Father, we come, thank you for all of our, every seat this field. Father, we ask that you let us be of one mind. And Father, we ask that the words of our mouth and meditation of our hearts be separate from that sight. Father, we here just for, to do best was best for the city of Jasper. Each and every one of us, so then Father, go with this and that. All of these things, your name is up there. Amen.
Amen. Uh, next, we're gonna, uh, on the agenda, we have, uh, public comments. We ask everyone, council, uh, members of the audience, please understand that council cannot discuss any presented issue, nor can it take any action on any issue at this time, except that a statement of fact, including policy, may be made if responsive to an issue. That's the Attorney General's opinion, J.C., dash, zero, one, six, nine. So, if we have any public comments.
I didn't say anything, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to just say something. I'm sorry.
Chair recognizes him. Yes.
Unfortunately, I've been through what you guys are about to go through at a different level at the school. And, and one thing I think you need to really understand is, basically, this is the only person that you get to hire. Everything else is left up to Human Resources and the City Manager. But this position is really important. And one of the things that you're gonna also find, that we found in superintendent candidates, is that they know a lot about the city of Jasper before they even come here for an interview. We found that with superintendent candidates, they knew more about the district than we did, and some of our staff did. Ms. Wilson can attest to that. Unfortunately, we went through, in my eighteen years, a few superintendents. But that was the only person we hired. It was up to Human Resources and campus principals and everybody else to hire everybody else. So, this is a very, very, very important position that you've been asked to, to hire. So, I just want to caution you and, and, and understand that this process doesn't have to be very hurried up, because, uh, you're, you may find that, uh, it's gonna be a little more difficult than you might think. But, uh, just want you to really understand, I found this literature on the Texas, Texas City Managers Association that talks about, uh, the process, and I thought it was valuable information. I, I read it, even though I don't have a dog in the hunt. I care a lot about this city, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be very interesting, the process that you guys choose to, to, to follow. Uh, there's three, two or three different processes they recommend in here. And, uh, you're blessed that you do have someone with the knowledge and skills that Ms. Wilson does to help you in this process. But, at the end of the day, you're gonna have to drop the gavel on whoever brought in. So, I just want you to understand that this is the only person that you really hired, and how important it is. And so, I hope you take it that way, and, um, it's gonna be hard to fill these shoes. Nobody on this council, I don't think, has ever been through this process. You've got someone that's been here as long as, as, uh, Ms. Kelly was, and, and, uh, it, it's a process that's foreign to you. So, I, I hope that you understand the seriousness of it, and, uh, politics has to take a backseat. Uh, but we have to do, I think, what's in the best interest of Jasper in the future. Because if this person stays as long as Ms. Kelly did, you won't have to hire another one as your, as being a city councilman. So, thank you for your service, and I hope you read this information. I went to office last night, made these copies, and, and I hope you do take it serious and take time to read it. Because the better informed you are about this and the process, I think the better able you'll be to make a decision for Jasper. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Hopkins, appreciate it. Anyone else? Chief Hall? Chair recognizes Chief Gerald Hall.
I didn't realize this was, this type of meeting we was having.
It's just a workshop.
Um, because what I want to say, don't really have anything to do with what's on the agenda, right?
It's communications also, you can speak.
I've been working with the city thirty-one years. Seen a lot of council coming and going. But this council is embarrassing to the employees, to the town. The way y'all conducting business is unprofessional. At the very least, you're, the citizens voted you into them seats to do their business. And you are to conduct yourself as professional. You don't have to agree on everything, that's why you have a vote. Now, that's my personal thought, Father. Now, as a police chief, I'm saying-
Excuse me, is it chief? Want to step out and take that day?
Yes, I will.
As a police chief, I am bound to maintain the peace in this town as best I can. So, any further, at any may, incidents like we had at the last one, it's gonna, I'm gonna come down hard and hit. It ain't gonna be guiding you to your truck, or, or, you gonna know you messed up. And I'm sorry, I'm, I've devoted so many years to this town and serving it, and it, it just tears me up. I know y'all can get along, you may have personal animosity about this or that, but that, that, you gotta put out the door. When you in here doing your business, you are to allow a councilman to make a suggestion, or, or, uh, ask to amend, or put someone on the agenda, that's how, how the business works. Y'all ain't been doing that. So, please, on behalf of all the citizens, the businesses, and the employees of, of the city, because right now, I'd be surprised if anybody even applied for City Manager. Because they, they watch this online, on loud, and they don't want to come into a ridiculous mess like that. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Anyone else? Captain Poindexter?
I just wanted to echo what the chief just said. I've been here thirty-seven years, seen a lot of councils coming and going. Y'all got a lot of stuff to get covered, as a mayor and councilman, I understand that. You not only have to take care of the citizens of Jasper, but you gotta take care of the employees of the city of Jasper. And we appreciate the job that y'all do. I've talked to a lot of you individually, I've listened to you, I've had, I've had each, some of you in my office, we've sat down and talked to them. I've not been around the bush, or, I've been, I've been straightforward with you. You don't have to, as the chief said, you don't have to agree on everything. But at the end of the day, it's about the city of Jasper. It's about taking care of the citizens and the employees. And I would say that probably, I'm gonna say a hundred percent of the employees enjoy working for the city of Jasper. But, as the chief said, I watched this online, and I have people call me from other towns, other police officers that call me that up, and they're like, "What in the world is going on with your council and everything?" And I, you know, I says, "Look, they're grown men, they're gonna get it worked out." And as the chief said, I, I was thinking this could be a private thing, and I'm not trying to embarrass nobody. But I love this city. If I didn't, I wouldn't have been here thirty-seven years. And now you've got this on your shoulders, as far as the new city manager goes. This lady's gonna be hard to beat. All I can say is, good luck to you. But you're gonna have to agree, and it's gonna come to the point, we're gonna have to hire somebody, or y'all will have to hire someone, that's gonna take care of the employees and the citizens also. And all I'm saying is, please, we're all grown men. We're not, some of us might never be hangout buddies, we're not gonna lunch and get coffee. But when we're up here conducting business, please conduct business. Shake hands as grown men, and then walk away, and if you disagree, if you have a disagreement, sit down and talk with that person. We do it at the police department every day. And we got thirty-two people down there, we don't all agree on everything. Lieutenant Hattner, myself, you know, we're, we're two of the best friends. But we don't agree on everything, but we sit down and talk about it. And you gotta open your ears and listen. I learned that out, thirty-seven years of working this street, a lot of times, people just want to be heard. And if you've got an ideal, and you think you can better that ideal, jump on board and help them better. Don't run it down and shut it down. Throw your, throw your, uh, your two cents in it, say, "Look, maybe we could do this to make it better." That's really all I've got to say, and I appreciate it also.
Thank you, Captain Poindexter, appreciate it. Does anyone else have any, uh, comments?
Uh, Mayor, I do.
Chair recognizes Councilman Sample.
I go along with these two right here. I've been here thirty-five years myself. In this town, connected to it, saw it go and come, saw it grow. But the main thing I see right here now is, all this money that's come here, and it's gone to some people's head. That, that's created, my thinking, the money, people think, "Oh, do this, oh, do it, oh, do it." Ain't nobody over here deciding what the people want. It's what I want, I want, I use, I have. Now, this is the city of Jasper, it's not "I." I ain't part, I, I ain't "I," I was voted in by the people. I'm gonna stay for the people, I'm gonna stay for, for the people, I'm gonna stay for the people, I'm gonna talk for the people. And that's what everybody needs to get into. But money has created, the money has created the stuff here, is what I see. And it's the people's money, it's not mine, it's not yours, not yours, it's not mine. It's the people's money, the city of Jasper. So, we talk about what they need to do there, we do for the city of Jasper, not, "Oh, I've got this going, oh, I've got, no, 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 no." That's what's happening here, that's what's happening here. And the other regime, probably might get on that call with all this. The mayor's out, the mayor got voted out unanimously. And we need to take him off of that board he's on. He's out, he's got voted out by the people, by the people. So, what does he stay for? Who is keeping him in there? Why? Why? Y'all still talking about all the time, so why?
Excuse me, just let him speak when he finished and he's done, okay?
Oh, that'll answer it?
Got another minute, nope.
Okay.
You know, we're not responding to anything. You can just make a, just make a statement.
I make a statement, and I stand behind it, and the chief is right. I'm part of what showed my ass last week. But I'm sorry about it, but I ain't sorry about it, because how it happened. That's all right. I am a man. I don't get run over, I don't get pushed around by no damn guy.
Councilman Sample.
No one. Understand me?
All right, they should, three minutes, Councilman Sample.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to say?
I got one, I'd say, Mayor, I'm out.
Yes, you may, Chair recognizes, and I can say, this is, is open, this is a workshop, we're not making any decisions on anything here. And I'm glad that the, some of the public is here, arguments. You know, we just want to make sure that, uh, we want to try to make this thing work. That's, that's what we're here to do. Okay? So, Chair recognizes Captain Poindexter.
Here's what I've got to say. This is exactly what I'm talking about right here. Two men sitting across the counter from each other, they're on the same city council. And one of them's getting all beside himself, and says, "I was talking to this man in pu, or in private, and trying to get some differences worked out." This is what I'm talking about. We were asked to be here for a reason. We didn't know it was gonna be in this type of meeting, but y'all invited this meeting, so I'm gonna say what I got to say. I'm with the chief, I'm sick of hearing this. You're grown men, get off the playground. Start working together, because all you're doing is hurting these people and these people right here. If you can't agree on stuff, and you can't get your differences worked out, then we need a new city council and a new mayor. And that's how I feel about it. I'm just like the chief, I've been here thirty-six years. If I didn't want to be here, I wouldn't have been here that long. I've had job offers, but I love this town. I like working here, I enjoy my job. And it's time for y'all to start enjoying yours. It's time for you to lower these differences, it's time for you to quit feuding and fighting. It's time to go out like men. That's what it's time for, because you ain't hurting nobody but us, you ain't hurting yourselves, you're hurting us. And you're hurting these people right here, these citizens of this town, that expect better out of us. I'm starting to look my emotions to get involved, that's how I feel about it. Because I'm tired of seeing grown men fight.
I don't understand.
It's ridiculous. Thank you.
And, uh, just to be clear, this is a, even though this is a workshop, we have a forum, this thing has to be posted. Anything we have, where you have more than three council members, Mayor, it is a workshop. But, public comments are public comments, and they are allowed during the workshop. So, you don't have to apologize for anything that you're saying. If you want to speak in public comments, that's what it's for, no matter who's here. Maybe some of those things need to be said. Maybe there's some of the citizens, maybe some of these things need to be heard by the citizens. So, anybody, any, wants to have anything to say during the public comment sections of the meeting, are allowed to do so. No further comments, we'll move on. Items for discussion, there will be no action taken on any items on the agenda that we discussed. First item on the agenda is procedures for moving forward filing for the upcoming city manager's position. Give the floor to our HR Director, Judy Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Poindexter. I think I can second the comment you made about Denise. This is gonna be an extremely hard role to fill. Uh, Denise has done some great things for this city. Just can't say enough good things about working for her. So, for the employees here, it is also heartfelt for us. She's been great, I've only been here three and a half years, but I've seen how she handles things, just very professionally. She doesn't do anything outside the guidelines that would not be done otherwise. I can't tell you the number of mornings, which is almost daily, I'm sitting in my office, and I see people going in and out of her office, employees. It's for advice, it's for, uh, recommendations. She is always there, and has always been there to open her door, and has never, ever turned anybody away that I'm, that I'm aware of. She's, um, she's just been great. So, saying that, we are in a position of having to find someone. This meeting today is to discuss the procedures for that. I've looked over the handbook that Eddie has given me, it's got a lot of really good guidelines in there as how, as far as how we need to proceed. So, with, with that being said, um, I'm gonna throw my disclaimer out there, and it's exactly what Mr. Hopkins said. This is not a decision for me to make, okay? It is up to the five city council members to make this decision. So, we need to move forward with this, I think, at least get a game plan together and decide how we're gonna proceed with it going forward. Denise is gonna be gone, I think, January twelfth is her last day. We do need to have someone, at least as an interim, in that position at that time. As far as city manager, I would also say, you know, let's not take this decision lightly. Give your input, give your thoughts on it, but it needs to be a well-informed decision that we make. You know, whether it's someone internally, um, for interim, or permanent, or if it's someone outside. So, um, with that being said, I need, I think we need to discuss a timeline, how we need to proceed with that. I have given each one of you a list of, uh, questions we need to make a thinking of. So, um, let's move forward.
Judy, uh, once, once Ms. Kelly, as, uh, once, once her tenure's up, once she, permanently, uh, the position, how long do we, if, say, like, if we do need to get a, how long do we need to fill that position? How long do we have for putting a temporary?
A temporary or an interim. We need to have someone in place-
How soon does the state say we have to have to have that?
When she leaves. It's my understanding and doing my research, that's what I have been told. We do need someone, even if it's just interim, employees, once she terminates her employment. So, I would say January thirteenth. So, I think the first decision we need to make is how we're gonna proceed with filling the interim. And then we can discuss various aspects of hiring a city manager.
Can we make that decision? Can we make the decision by these hour?
Um, well, you can make it whenever you need to, it just needs to be done whenever she vacates her office.
Well, I, I think whoever interim's gonna be, uh, I'd love him to be able to shadow her for a while before she leaves, in case there's some stuff that could be shadowing, helped along with, or status of projects, there's a lot of stuff going on right now. I know department heads know about a lot of it, there's some of the stuff that she works with that they can talk about. And you have the financial aspect on the other side of it, too.
That is correct. Um, I think that's a great idea. I think being able to really know what she does, as well as what our employees feel on a daily basis, would be a great tool for-
Twenty-something years ago, I was in the same position, when we had the city manager leave, and one come in. It's hard, if you don't have somebody to support us, makes it difficult.
Well, and I think we can all agree, there's a lot of projects that go on on a daily basis, um, day-to-day activities that a lot of people, especially our citizens, are just not aware of. They really don't understand what these factors, what all our employees do every day. So, that would be helpful to know, especially the larger projects that you're talking about. I think, you know, maybe shadowing would be a, a good idea. I don't know how she feels about having somebody tag along with her every day.
Well, another thing I would think is, uh, go along with what David is saying, you know, having someone, you know, in that position. You know, we want to try to get someone there, you know, as, as soon as possible, as our councilman would say, you know. I think December might be a little bit quick, but whatever time we decide to do, would, would be okay. Uh, I just think that, we would just want to make sure that we get someone with some, like, as, as far as the job, job description, what we've discussed, make sure that someone, you know, that would be able to step into that position, have some knowledge of how city government works.
That is right.
Uh, we have to, we have to have that, uh, whether they, uh, shadow Denise or not, or just come in and can, have the ability to be able to communicate with the department heads, uh, because anybody that comes in, whether it's an, an interim or another city manager, they're, they're not gonna be Denise. I mean, because she can walk around and she can show them what, what she's done, but they're gonna need to establish themselves as, as, as a manager and with the employees.
Now, also, giving each one of you a job description, I encourage you to read over that. And those are just, for starters, what she does throughout a year. So, uh, it is quite extensive.
And also, with the, uh, interim, uh, I just feel like that, that would be somebody that, like you said, with an interim, and we do have projects, things that are going on, uh, just to make sure that those projects continue to go on, not to come in and try to make any changes or do, uh, make any differences as far as that, just basically maintain the housekeeping items that we need to do.
Day-to-day operations.
Day-to-day operations, you know, until we do get a permanent job.
My suggestion is that, uh, when it comes to the interim, the interim, that it be someone that's already inside, that's working for the city. I believe that we should give someone inside the city an opportunity for growth and promotion. And if we decide to go outside for city manager, then we can do that, but on the interim spectrum, because January is right around the corner. And we all, we already are in the little projects, so that should be someone that's already inside of the system. That we should allow to have the interim spot. And if we decide to hire a new city manager to, to, you know, make it permanent, or outside, but for the interim, I believe as long as you be decided already.
Well, this is a decision for the council.
That's why we're here discussing everything, you know, like I said, it's not any decisions that we're gonna make on anything. We want to take everybody's ideas, put them together, discuss them with, I mean, Judy is the HR Director, you know, and I, I, I will say that with her professionalism, and Eddie knows her, because she has been with, uh, J.I.S.D., so, you know, the recommendations that, that she would make would, you know, would take a lot of weight, would, would, a lot of weight go along with, to making that decision. Even though, like I say, even though we, we are the ones to make the ultimate decisions, the recommendations will go along.
Right. I would advise you, if we do hire internal, well, or externally either one for those inner positions, take time to visit with the ones that you're thinking about, you know, spend some time with them. Listen to what they have to say, listen to their ideas, listen to their suggestions, you know, listen, you know, above all, listen to their knowledge that they have. Because I'll be the first saying, we have got a great group of employees here. I, I just can't say enough good things about our employees and what they do every single day. But, you know, it is, again, it's the decision of the councilmeners to decide on this, on these positions.
And, uh, as the, uh, the guide that Eddie gave us, we're like, like, I've, I've had this, and then I've, I've read through it, I've, I read it over and over over the weekend, but, uh, as it states in the guide, it said, "The hiring process for a city manager must be deliberate and not impulsive." That means, we just shouldn't say like, "Well, you know, I think this guy should be it," or, "Well, I like this person," or whatever. Don't just do it on impulse, but like, as Judy just stated, you know, visit with whatever candidates we have. You know, talk to them, even if it's an interim. You know, we have somebody inside or somebody outside that we want to do as an interim. Take your time, because you might think you know this person, because you see them on a day-to-day basis, but have you actually sat down and talked to them? You know, we need to just, you know, sit down, talk to that person. They may be in a position, maybe somebody inside, or whether it's outside, it doesn't matter. Get to know that person, okay? Is this, uh, because they've been here and you know them, or you're outside and you know them, are this gonna, are they gonna be right for the city of Jasper? Are they gonna be right for the employees? You know, not just because, "Well, I like him, you know, I like Frank over here, so I think Frank would be a good, a good city manager." You know, he's, he's a nice guy, but no, you really need to get to know them. And even while, while she's here, pick the city manager's brain, what do you think? You know, we can, we can ask her, she's still here, she still has some input.
I think that's-
And I would value her input.
You know, and above all, look at it with an open mind. Not from a, necessarily a personal perspective, but an open mind, and really think about what's gonna be best for the city. Because I do think that most of us do have the best interest of the city of Jasper at heart. We want what's best, we want a leader going forward, um, that's gonna do, continue to do good things for the city.
Um, so, I just wanna ask the other councils, um, we have our last meeting of the year, December the eleventh. At that meeting, if we was to appoint somebody, they would have at least thirty days left with Denise, you know what I'm saying? To walk through the day-to-day, pick a brain, to get whatever they can before the table starts, with January the thirteenth. They would have, they would have the story in January thirteenth, correct? So, I was asking if you all want to take the time this month, next month, November, kinda like, you know, do interviews with people, figure out who we want to at least sit in, so we don't know what we're going into the next year, instead of waiting at the last meeting.
That can be taken under consideration, we're not gonna make any decisions at this meeting. This is just open, this is open for discussion, and that's one of the recommendations that we'll take.
Can I ask a question?
Full recognizes, uh, Ben Hancock.
Are, are y'all interested in interviewing for Finance Department Chair, or just City Manager?
Just City Manager.
Just City Manager.
Finance.
Doesn't she currently do both?
She does, but that is a very unusual-
Situation.
Situation.
But when she leaves, my understanding, she no longer being employed.
That is correct. At that time, we will address the, uh, Finance Director position. That'll be addressed for a while later.
Yeah, that'll be addressed before she leaves. The problem, the, the issue, and there's not an issue with that, but the difference between her position as city manager and her position as Finance Director, we do have an assistant city finance director.
Yes.
So, we, possibly. Okay? But, you know, that's, that's the only difference is, we do have a, she does hold a dual position as city manager and city finance director. With that, we do not have a assistant city manager that could step into that position as an interim. Not saying that they would automatically step into that position, but not automatically saying that our city Assistant City Finance Director would step in that position. But she can step into that position as an interim, and we can decide to do that, because we have that person that's already an employee.
And again, the city council hires the city manager, not necessarily- And, and again, the city council hires the city manager, not necessarily.
Not the city finance director, that's what this is about, this is what, what, this is what, we're here for what council has to do. We don't hire the, and, and the correct Eddie, we do hire the city attorney and the, uh, the judge.
And the police chief, I forgot about that.
Yeah, yeah, she's not just the only one, but, yeah, we do have the police chief, just to let it be clear, let everybody know, the police chief, the city judge, the city attorney, and the city manager.
Yes, and just to be clear, the city judge and the city attorney are not considered employees, they are contracted.
That, that's correct, even though we do, we do choose and we do hire them, but they are not actually city employees, she is correct.
Any other thoughts on interim and how we are gonna make forward?
I just think that, uh, we should at least talk about December the eleventh, so we'll know, kinda like in the mindset, then, though even though city doesn't know kinda where we're going into, to the beginning of the next year. Not wait to the very last minute, just trying to pursue, you know, we have the time to do the homework. By the time they ask the questions, so by December the eleventh, we can go ahead and make it official, so they can take this.
I can't make anything official until she leaves, correct?
That is correct, that is correct.
It's been only talked.
So, you guys just need to, whatever goes on the agenda, we'll follow accordingly.
So, since Denise is here, would you like to say anything? Since you're here, you don't have to, I'm just asking, since you're here, I wanna give you that courtesy.
I do, I can't tell you what the last twenty years has meant to me. I don't try and do this without crying, because this is a family to me, and all these people are a family to me, you know. Regardless of the trials and tribulations that we've come through, we survived. And I hope and pray that we will go forward, you know, and continue to grow, you know. I love this town, I didn't have to come back here, I wasn't born and raised here, just my parents were. I wouldn't, I wouldn't trade it for anything, I wouldn't trade my life, I wouldn't trade my job, and I surely wouldn't trade my family and my work family. So, please know how much I appreciate the opportunity I've had the last twenty years, and thank you all very much.
So Judy, do we have anything else on the, uh, just anymore, or Judy, council, any, any other discussions on the, uh, procedures moving forward with, uh, filling the upcoming manager's position? I just would like to stress to everybody, the, uh, M O that Judy wrote us, please read that, review the job description, the guideline for recruiting that Eddie gives us, thank you very much, I appreciate that Eddie, but just let's, wanna let everybody know, please, please, like, like the guideline says, deliberate but not impulsive, don't just, well, we know we gotta have somebody, let's not be impulsive on this decision. Let's, let's, let's take it seriously, take your time, think about it, yeah, we need to throw somebody in, and no, we don't need to throw somebody in. We need to make sure we take our time, we look at whoever that is brought to council, uh, I'm sure Judy, she'll, she'll be working on that.
I'll be working on that, and I'll be in touch with, um, each one of you as far as letting you know some suggestions that have been made. And then, if we have another meeting, whether it's a discussion only, or if it's to make decisions, or depending on the agenda, the mayor will be fully involved, and we'll be forward.
Councilman Schultz, if you wanna say something.
I will, I'll watch the discussion, alright.
Councilman Lewis?
Thank you, uh, last question, I know in, in this package, we have different options of how we want to proceed. Uh, if we was to, I guess, put the job posting out, um, how would that work? I know you gave us an example of Judy in-house, and then you can give us an example of who went out and got a, a third-party company to, I guess, interviewing higher candidate.
My understanding of, of that is, there's two options, one for us to post it through the city of Jasper and see what we get. If we do that, my suggestion would be, um, go through the normal channels, which is in-house posting, workforce commission. For this position, um, we'll definitely put it out there on the T M L website, they have a statewide site for any positions in municipalities in Texas, which is a really good tool. City manager website, um, there's one that I don't remember of, that's, uh, it's T M L H R, um, I can throw it out there, yes, sir.
One question, I, I don't mean to cut you off in the middle, when you do something like that, what is the process, is it like a thirty-day, uh, job, sixty-day, ninety-day?
That's up to you guys. You know, we can say until fill, we can say that way you're buying yourself some time to make sure you're gonna get a viable candidate. Now, I mean, you don't wanna, you don't wanna forever, but at the same time, you do wanna make sure you get a very good qualified group of applicants.
Yeah, there's no timeframe on that, as far as, uh, you know, 'cause we can have, that interim couldn't be there until, there's no timeframe that we have to fill that position. So, when we got an interim there, you know, that, that's, that's gonna be up to us, we, we're, we're the ones who make that decision. And so, that's why I said, they want you to take your time, like I said, be deliberate but not impulsive on making the decisions. We wanna make sure that we, as we just said, qualified candidate.
The other option would be go to an outside source, now, you can imagine, I've already gotten a solicitation from one of those, so, I haven't checked out credentials or anything, and if we choose that, that would be, my biggest suggestion is, let's check these guys out, let's see who we're dealing with. Uh, there's a lot of flabbergasteders out there, or some that's very reputable.
The third, the third party.
The third party, that is correct, however, had one reach out to me, and so, just out of curiosity sake, I reached out to them just to see a cost factor, because that is huge, okay? We don't wanna be just throwing money away for something that's unnecessary, but if you get a very unbiased opinion, you know, that, again, it's gonna be a decision that you guys will make. For them to go through the process, which was, and it was a minimal amount of time that they gave us, about six to eight weeks, it's about sixteen thousand dollars, and I just got that this morning in an email. So, it kinda gives you a little bit of a grasp of what we would be spending for that.
And that's just for them to go through the process to get us to candidates and then?
That is correct.
And we make the submissions, give us an unbiased opinion, not saying that we, this councilor is like, like, you know, Councilman Barbara, he may have somebody that he may have in mind, Councilman Schultz may have somebody that he may have in mind, you know, we all may have that person, but that's what we might wanna see, but with the outside, a third-party contractor, that would give us the unbiased opinion as to, okay, look, we have somebody that we wanna recommend outside, we, we, we also wanna look inside too, but, you know, that would give us an unbiased opinion as, and a person that would, wouldn't have any connections with him.
I think the city's done that, thanks, uh, they've used an associate manager like that, like you hired several years ago here. They got a gentleman named Wright, said, I think that was the, that firm, I guess it was unbiased opinion, it wasn't very good.
Yes, Denise?
We did go, it was called Watersbury, and it cost us about thirty thousand dollars, we had three top, three of them, and we made offers to all three of them.
I, I remember this one, thirty thousand dollars.
You on council during that time, Dave?
I did not hire him.
No, I'm saying, were you on council?
I, I just sat off.
Oh, okay.
I've been through it from Kerry and David, and then after David, and then Wrightstaff was coming in, and Barbara was here, so I've been through this every time. It's a, it's a process, it takes time.
It's, it's not easy, like I say, you know, it, it might look easy, it might be simple, oh, yeah, we can just get this person, but, you know, like Judy was saying, we want to be able to, you know, interview, talk to, you know, pick the brains, you know, what, where they're coming from, where they've been, the type of experience they have, anybody can interview well, and as you know, anybody can come in and they can talk a good game, as they say. But, are they gonna be, one thing we wanna is that, like, think Point Dexter or Chief, are they gonna be a good fit for the city of Jasper?
Well, I mean, it, it's not a date, it's a marriage.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. You know, it may be a date, but it's a long, it's just not, it's not just, it's not just a one-time thing, but we gotta make sure that, you know.
I, I guess, the, the high-down question is, I guess, every council member or anyone, you put, this question is, what are we really looking for, I know we're looking for city manager, but what are the qualities that we really looking for, right? What, what, what do we want to represent us, you know, we can always interview anybody, anybody can give us a good pitch, but what are the morals and values that we're really looking for?
Well, one of the things that I'd ask Judy to do is put together a, uh, questionnaire, so what are we gonna do, and what, what we want, we can do that, what we want, and give us points, we'll give, we'll give them points for, for this, okay, uh, is this, how, what type, what kind of fit is this person for the city of Jasper, this person's gonna be, how, how is this person gonna treat their employees? How to treat employees from where they were before, you know, how do they represent, how, how are they gonna represent the city? We wanna put together a list of things that we want to, uh, for us, okay, for us as a council, not just, you know, that person come in and tell us how he doing, we wanna be able to question them and have that available to, put to them and say, okay, yeah, we have, we, we have an idea, it's not what they're gonna do, it's for us to have an idea, what we want them to do, and what we want for the city of Jasper, and see how they answer those questions, yeah.
Similar to a score sheet with a, you know, a numeric value on each point. And I can put something together, but I would also like your input, because you have to tell me, representing the citizens of Jasper, what you think we want going forward, okay, and I'll be happy to, you know, give my input on it, but let me get some feedback from you guys as well, and just tell us, what are we looking for, what do we want? Where do we wanna be five years from now, and it would, that would be a question for any candidate, I would think, what's your long-range?
What are their long-range goals, what are their long-range goals for the city of Jasper?
How are you gonna handle something in an emergency situation?
Have they had an emergency situation, they've handled it before, past experience. Are they just trying to get five more years in so they can retire versus grow something? There's, there's a lot of variables.
There are a lot of variables, it is.
When you go operational, E O C and stuff, and you've got somebody that's never done it, it's, it's.
And, and like you said, they, it's gonna be important, like, where they coming from, I mean, this is southeast Texas, we're a whole different outfit. If you came from an area where you didn't have any hurricanes, or you didn't have any storms, or an area where you don't know what, going through what we went through last summer as far as fire, as a, as a, as a city manager, uh, you know, we need to, we need to know how they're gonna handle those, handle those situations.
Well, not only.
People that were outsiders that came in that had dealt with it in the past, at emergency operations, uh, with city things, that were the best tire on paper, and they didn't turn out too good for us.
Yeah.
The experience is sort of a neat thing, and, and somebody that's been through and dealt with it typically has a different way of dealing with things, uh, I don't think you wanna get somebody that's fixing to retire next week, but I also don't think you want the, some young person to come in here and use your talent as a stepping stone for two or three years, and find a better job, we need to find somebody that's interested in our community and our health. And there's people out there that are, you know, there's people that still like water and still like land, that would be willing to be here, participate, or they may already be here, I mean, just, we don't really know for sure.
And I'm not necessarily saying, uh, a person has to have, uh, like you say, an E O C, uh, emergency management experience, 'cause, 'cause we're unique in what, where we are, it's like, it doesn't mean that somebody that lived in California that had to deal with mudslides, I mean, they had situations too, but, you know, how can, and, and, and that could be a question, okay? Where, where you came from, where you live, situations that you've had, how can you equate that to the situations that we have, or the type of situations that we, emergency situations that we have here in the city of Jasper? How is that, how would that experience that you had there help you with dealing with the situations that we have?
I agree, and I think, you know, you, you don't want someone, in my opinion, that's just using this as a stepping stone to put it on the resume. And I know Eddie's dealt with that, with, uh, the school district.
Sure.
We had many superintendents that came in, and it was, they were using J I S D as a stepping stone to put on their resume to move on to bigger and better things. It would be nice to have someone that's very heartfelt, that, for the city being something that they wanna thank you, because then you're starting all over again with the same process when they move on.
And we also wanna make sure that we have someone that's familiar with the type of government that we have here. As far as, you know, the city manager type of government, what type A, whatever we have here, so, we wanna make sure that they're familiar with, you know, that type of government.
I agree, it's government accounting and procedures is unlike anything else. You can't just bring someone out from the private sector again and expect them where, they've been in the workforce of, let's meet production, let's meet this, let's meet this criteria to bring money in, our budget's set. And we have to be able to work within that budget, so it would be nice, maybe, to have someone, in my opinion, someone with that type of experience.
Judy, do we have a, anything else, anyone have anything else to add, anyone?
Mayor, I got one more thing to say, and I'll say it on end of the positive note.
Well, we're not finished, though, you know, we still have another part of this.
This is the type of city council meeting I can be proud of, this type of meeting our citizens can be proud of. There's no doubt in my mind, everyone who's sitting in this council, including the mayor, has got the city in the best interest of our. The people in the, in the public, they felt like you did, that you would be in the position you're in. I said two negative speeches, and I'm gonna say this positive, this is, this is the type of council meeting that our citizens and our employees will stand up all day long and say, that's my council, and that's my mayor, thank y'all.
Okay, well Judy, uh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, we'll be leaning on you quite a bit, uh, council.
You know, my door's open for any one of the five of you, as long as they're all sitting there, I'll be happy to.
Council, I just wanna thank you, uh, for this portion of the agenda. Like I said, there's no actions taken, you know, like your suggestions, your recommendations, like I said, be in contact with Judy, call her. Things that you, anything that you may come up with, you can do that. Uh, next item on the agenda, mayor and city council communication. You and Council, Councilman Lewis and Councilman Schultz, I know what I did with it, I did have it, oh, yeah, here we go. They came up with some suggestions on the, uh, and, this is a workshop, so, anyone here, employees, visitors, people that we have here, if you would like to speak, you can be recognized by the chair, because it's definitely not gonna let the situation get out of hand, and I thank you, Captain Point Dexter for that, 'cause that's how we want things to be. Anyone wants to speak, this, this is your house, you wanna speak, you have the right to speak, you can raise your hand. We recognize the chair, unless either chair doesn't feel like it, what you're gonna say, if you start out saying something that's gonna be negative against this city or this council, then I will ask you to sit down. But, we just wanna let everybody know that this is your house, anything that's brought up, you decide, if you wanna make a comment on it, you can raise your hand and be recognized, and I don't, we do have public comments, if you come in and you have something that you wanna say in public comments, you can do that. But anybody as a member of this audience, and a citizen of this city, if you have something that you wanna, wanna say, that is going to be within reason, and, and, and something that you feel is, that is gonna affect this city in a positive way, then you'll be recognized to do so. Councilman Schultz and Councilman Lewis had, uh, submitted some items for the workshop. You know, like I said, just for discussion, we're not taking any action on anything, they, uh, see meeting rules and procedures, robbers' rules of order, communication, that's, that's all part of the communication. So, Councilman Lewis, Councilman Schultz, well.
Um, it's very simple, uh, we came up with the agenda because, uh, before we are council members, we are men amongst men, right? And we don't have to always agree with each other on how we vote or how we think, we should always respect each other for who we are, first of all, right? So, I, I do agree with Mr. Fundexter and Chief Hall, um, there is a lot of intimacy on this council, right? Uh, and a lot of people have things that they're wearing on their shoulders on their chest, and that we, we are men, we should be able to sit at the table and sound like men, and hatch it out, right, because, like, not only. Because not only are we representing the city, but when people see us, wanting to be proud of us and proud of voting for us. So really, it's just like I say, a workshop is talking amongst men and ask questions that you normally wouldn't ask. So we can get it out on the table, so we can move forward as a council. And that's why we brought this to the table on the workshop.
Yeah, and there was, uh, the, there've been several times that we've had discussions, that meetings, or we've had motions and seconds that didn't end up getting voted on. We've had help from the crowd trying to count votes, uh, some things that, that's not a, probably the best way to do it, maybe. Maybe it is, I don't, I don't... We've had difficulty trying to get stuff even with two council members' signatures on the agenda because it didn't fit the criteria that somebody else wanted, or, or it wasn't a proper timing or whatever the case may be. And in the past, if a council member had something that they wanted on the agenda, they basically would ask the mayor, um, about it, or they would get a fellow council member to sign it. But we're at a point in time now when we try to get something on the agenda, we ask about it, either doesn't make it, or it's the wrong time, or I decided we're not gonna do it, and, you know, if you don't like it, run for mayor. I mean, that kinda attitude, and that's not, that's not for voting for us either. And I just, I'd like to be in a situation where, you know, to discuss or talk about things. And Anderson and I, we're at a meeting here while that. We sat down probably thirty minutes while we were waiting on somebody else. Matter of fact, there was a labor engineer there, there too. That's probably the most productive conversation I've ever had. But we had, uh, a labor engineer was there and we visited back and forth, and we were all on the same page trying to work on a couple of issues that come up. I told him after the meeting, I said, that's, that's the best discussion we've ever had, and I really appreciate you taking the time. But it's not like that in our own town sometimes. So it's just, it's an issue that needs to be addressed. It's been addressed, uh, some way, but, but not publicly, and, and, uh, I don't know. I would, I would like to follow the rules that we've been following for a long time. When somebody wants something on the agenda, I mean, Marcus came to me and said, hey, would you sign this? I wanna put it on the agenda. I would drive and pay at your office, heck, y'all signed it for it. Then the meeting will pass it, just needs to just discuss, that's all.
Okay. Uh, on that same note, I have, uh, a becoming mayor, and, uh, as a council member, I have, uh, just like stating what you just stated, there have been times when I was a council member, wasn't mayor, and following the, uh, procedures and asking questions, I got asked to the city secretary or the, the city manager, okay, I wanna put something on the agenda, I could do that. And with the, uh, policies and procedures, I've never seen this, but now that I have and reading this, council meetings, rules and procedures for the city of Jasper, this is for our council meeting. I've, I've, I've asked the city secretary at, at some point in time, just like you now, as a council member, I'd like to put this on the agenda. Like I said during the previous administration, I had asked certain things we put on the agenda. And what I was told was, well, the mayor has the final say with what goes out on the, on the agenda. The mayor can approve what's on the agenda or what's not. If the mayor decides, well, no, I'm not gonna, because I remember at one time, there was one meeting that we had. Uh, and I think it was, and I will say this, and I will say this, and I'm glad to be here about Jeremy Chestnut. There was a meeting on, on the agenda about Jeremy at one time about that having votes to remove him. That was on an agenda. The mayor didn't even read it, the previous mayor, he didn't even read it. It was on the agenda, he just skipped. So things like that is what we need to work out beforehand, before we come to...
So, so, hold on, so I just wanna get a clarification. So you saying, because as a council member, the previous ma, the previous mayor did something like that to you, so you feel now that as you are mayor, and it's justified if you do it to us?
That's coming out of your mouth.
But that's what you're saying, you basically opened up saying, I'm a council member...
I just said when I was a council member, that happened.
So what, what he's saying is that we as council members now, presently, we're trying to put things on the agenda and you were refusing to get to go on the agenda. And then, and then you opened up to follow up and saying, when I was a council member, the previous mayor did A, B, and C, D.
That's true.
But I have been to meetings, hold on, I have been to meetings as a citizen, where I've seen you in homes put things on the agenda to go against the bribe and everything, and even though he might have agreed, he put it on the agenda for you to do it. So there has been times where you have put things on the agenda and I have witnessed it. So, but so, so the question is, so as a mayor now, if you have trauma or you feel somewhere about that back then, why as a mayor, you're gonna do the same thing if you feel like it was wrong to you?
That's incorrect. I'm saying that if I don't feel as though, as the mayor, you put something on the agenda, it was my decision as the mayor, if I don't feel as though that it's gonna be a benefit to the city of Jasper, I can do that, because guess what? It's not gonna come back on you as council, it's gonna come back on me as the mayor.
But why would majority of the council comes together as one to put something on the agenda?
That's, that's two, you're saying two people?
I've had, I've had items where all three of people, three people have signed it. Even if you don't agree, you should at least have, at least have, at least have the freedom to put it on the agenda if we're coming together.
You could always come and sit down, like just, like the Councilman Schultz just said, let's come in and sit down and discuss it before we put it on the agenda and make sure that it's something that should go on the agenda.
But if a council member...
I think we should do that.
If a council member has done the footwork to talk to every colleague to get them to sign it in an agreement, why should they all come to you just to put it on the agenda? They've done the footwork.
Because that, because that's the procedure, you have to bring it to the mayor to put it on the agenda.
Did you read that for him?
Yes, I did.
No, I was talking about the name.
Did I read what?
You didn't read it.
No, the, the direct, the directive from the city about procedures for putting stuff on the agenda. Do you have a copy of that?
Well, I have, I have the, uh, council meeting rules and procedures. I don't know exactly where it is in here, uh, let's see. What says, uh, no action gonna be taken, any item being posted on the agenda, that meeting and the agenda posted on the public place, seven to two hours. All council members may submit agenda item. Agenda items must be reached to city secretaries at city hall by five P M. Friday, two weeks before the regular Monday, uh, meeting. Request must be in writing in sufficient detail for council members to understand action requested. Agenda items for discussion, action will not be accepted if information is not available at five P M. On the Friday deadline, to ensure that all council members must be properly informed before each meeting, the mayor will exercise his or her best judgment and determine if items received, replacement on the agenda to meet the criteria.
Let me see. So if you don't agree with the item...
Hold on, hold on, hold on, touch, listen. If you read that, that'll explain to it, not me, the mayor. It doesn't matter if it's me or anybody else, if you read that, that explains it to you.
I'm asking you.
I'm just saying, if you read that, that'll explain it to me.
If you are the one that finalizes, listen, if you are the one that finalized the agenda, right? I, I give it that same, you're the man at this point. I'm asking you, if you don't agree with what we wanna put on the agenda, if it doesn't fit your whatever, you're gonna decide, let's do it.
Not mine, if it don't meet the criteria of the city. I have to make that determination. So if you wanna say me, yes, me, because I have to make that determination as the mayor. So when you're mayor, you have to make that decision.
Ms. Karen, have anybody submitted anything that was unlawfully to what goes on, on, have anybody submitted anything that you feel that was against the rules and procedure for the city?
No, because every city council member has the right to request agenda items.
Right. So if you are the finalizer, right, then you determine what goes on with this.
Yes, I do.
And you're saying that...
That's correct.
Every item that you have blocked to this parent...
I'm not saying anything, you're saying...
I'm asking a question, every, every, every item that has been submitted since you have been made, you have determined if it was on, gonna be on the agenda or not, correct?
Yeah.
Right, right, simple. So everything that we submitted, or I can say just me, I ain't even talking about everybody, everything I submitted that you have never put on the agenda.
I would love that.
Come on now.
You're not coming on now, I'm just saying, you're, you're telling me that.
Listen, listen, we're on man, so we don't...
I'm listening.
Everything I've submitted since you've been made has not made it to the agenda, not one time.
Okay.
Why?
Why do you think that is?
I'm asking you why.
Like I said, I just made the determination that it was not in the best interest of the city.
Right. So, so no matter what...
It doesn't matter, if you put something on and if it is in the best interest of the city, no, let me speak, let me speak.
All right, go ahead.
Then you can say what you gotta say.
Go ahead.
If I, if, if as mayor, and if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. If as mayor, excuse me, the chair recognizes...
Rich, you can speak here.
Yes, sir. Chair, chair recognizes Willie King.
My name is Willie King. Some of you may know me, you may not know me. You're a little too young. But I was, uh, candidate for city council some five, six times here in Jasper, candidate. At that particular time, we had at large positions, uh, not like you have now, that we got the most votes. Uh, we were on council seat. Out of all of that, those years that I ran in the seventies and the, uh, early eighties, I learned a lot. Number one, from an old man who told me that I had two ears and one mouth, and that meant that I should listen twice as much as I talk. Anybody can be a good councilperson or school representative when things are going great. But the question is, where do you stand in the midst of chaos and confusion? And it appears to me, that's just my idea from just sitting here at this, at this trampoline now, that there needs to be a lot more listening than talking. It doesn't matter if that talking, the talking is negative or if it's positive, you need to know where that person stands for, stands, standing and coming from, and what they are saying, or what they're trying to say. If you don't know what they're trying to say, you need to find somebody else to have to communicate what they're trying to say and get it to understand. Understanding is the main problem that we have, understanding. It's simple, it is a simple task. There should not be any dissension about anything that goes on. Nobody is a dictator here, this is a democracy, every councilman has the right to do this, the mayor has his position. Listen twice as much as you talk, and I think the problem will be solved. To me, it's just that simple. I would like to follow that.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. King. The chair recognizes, uh, Lieutenant Hammond.
Being a leader takes a lot of things outside of knowledge, wisdom, courage. It also takes an understanding, like Mr. King is saying, your authority as the mayor or a council member can either be your success or your demise. Just because you have the authority to do it does not mean you should do it. Working together takes sacrifice. If it's just a discussion as Mr. Schultz has agreed to, put it on the agenda to discuss and not make a motion on it or vote on it, discussions are healthy. It's healthy to agree to disagree, that's what a marriage is. But at the same time, the past has to be the past. The future has to be what's most important for this city. When, when we're dead and gone, all of us in this room, somebody will be here navigating the ship, good, bad, or ugly. Um, and I don't wanna stand idle by while we sit here and go back and forth while what Mr. Nice and everybody else in this city has created perishes because of indifferences. And that's me talking directly to you as council members, regardless of what your position is. There's no need in this room right now to holler and scream and agree and talk your authority and talk your position. It is a partnership. Council members are partners of the city of Jasper. So please, let's try to get past what we're coming up on right now and move forward so we're not here for the next three hours going back and forth about who did what when, and if it hurt your feelings or didn't hurt your feelings, it doesn't matter, the future is bright.
Thank you, thank you very much, Lieutenant Hammond. Uh, one thing I think that we need to do, I don't know, make a re... I'm sorry, chair recognizes Councilman Schultz.
Um, basically, this, and I've seen this in the past, I didn't remember verbatim. It says, all council members may submit agenda items. This is under our rule, it said, our request must be in writing and with sufficient detail for other council members to understand that action is requested. And it says that we have to have those items for discussion. Action won't be accepted if we don't have the information and timeline for action, which would be five P M. Prior to the meeting is supposed to be posted on that Friday before Monday meeting, that's what, and I think y'all post them at noon on the board on Fridays.
Yeah, we usually, Fridays is not, we try to get them before then so people will just to...
I'm talking about by the rules.
I'm sa, I'm saying that, but...
And, and, and now, now we do it prior to that, so they actually have more time than they used to have.
Right, because that's why we, we really need to have more time, because if you get, you get an agenda on Friday at noon, you have the weekend. If there are agenda items that are on, in my opinion, there's, if there are agenda items on it, you need to discuss with somebody with a department head, just like, say like the, uh, fire marshal, he may have something he wanna put on the agenda. Uh, in my, my opinion, I think there's something like that, we should be able to discuss that beforehand. So when we do get to council, there, there won't be a lot of, you know, back and forth.
Sure.
You know what I'm saying? So we, we already have approved that, okay, look, yeah, you, you need certain items, we wanna do that.
I have the floor, so let me finish here. I just, I just wanna read this, make sure that I understood it correctly. All council members may submit items. The requests have to be in writing, sufficient detail for people to understand what we're submitting. If it meets those criteria, that way we can ensure that other council members will understand what it's about. So it's in writing and it has to be on the back. It says, the mayor will exercise their best judgment, his or hers, in determining if it, if the item received for placement on the agenda meets the criteria. The criteria is in writing and understanding. Because the line above it says, all council members may submit agenda items. And it says, the mayor may add items that come before council, and an item that is not appearing on the agenda should not be taken up as a matter of action during council meeting, I understand that. However, the council may receive items, informational items that are not action items, just like today. Says, any member of the city staff wishing to have an item placed on the agenda will submit it to the mayor's office through the regular channel for approval. The city manager establishes a submission of routine items, so she doesn't have to submit everything. She just says, we've got something to discuss on budget work. When the mayor gives approval of the agenda, that's when it will be posted. And you posted it earlier, so the general public has more time to look at it than they used to, and I think that's a nice thing.
Yeah, also, cap, excuse me, if I may, also council members, because a lot of times, I come through and I'm here almost every day. A lot of times when we do put the binders in there, binders are still sitting in the, in the boxes sometimes. I mean, I, and I, I go through there. We come Monday, I come through Monday, I mean, I don't know, you may pick yours up earlier, but I don't know who, who's picking them up.
I, I pick mine up, sorry, go over.
Like I said, well, I see binders still sitting in there Monday morning. And, and they're, and they're, they're over a week. I mean, I try to get Karen to at least have them there before Wednesday, do I not, Karen? I'd like to try to have them, and which I said, I would like to try to have them there, so people, you know, like I know you picked yours up, because you, you called me.
I, I'd like to reread that, so I'd like to...
You do have a copy of it, everybody was given a copy of it the first day. You should have them. But not to disturb you, I apologize, continue.
No, that's fine, I'll take it, thank you.
Does any other council members have anything else to say? Councilman Barber?
Yes, compromise. See, I don't understand that compromise to a certain point because of... But he is at least not willing to compromise, like they say, he beating himself, he beating himself. I sell this council now for, however long I've been elected, never said anything. With all this, no mind, big, no you, that, it don't have no place here, like Lieutenant Hammond and I say, it don't have no place here, none. And every time that there's a disturbance, the chief hall don't have another officer, I'm gonna have him, I don't care who like it. I do not care who like it, I'm gonna back him. I've been knowing that man for a long time. He's been found in every situation I ever been in, he has been there, and I'm gonna be there for Fungex and the lieutenant the same. I'm gonna be there. We can stop all this bittering and we, they, they don't have no place here. We can meet downtown parks on that, and get that out of them, okay? You, we can handle everybody else's business, that's why he put us in. If we can't do that, like they say, we might need to find a little council. It's just that simple, right?
Just for the record, I do believe that, uh, Councilman Barber is a licensed peace officer.
Yes, I am, yes.
So that means you can step in and help?
I will.
You will, not that you can, but you will.
I will.
Does anyone else have anything to say as far as, I mean, it's, it's understandable that we need to, we really do need to work on our communications and how we approach things, just including myself, I'm not immune to this. I'm not, I hear what Councilman Lewis is saying, you know, am I gonna have to do better? Yes, I am, as a mayor, am I gonna have to do better? Yes, I am. But I will say this... But I will say this to everybody that's sitting here in this room, as mayor, and at any time. Because my heart is with this city. I don't care what anybody else wants, what anybody else do. What is good for the citizens and the city of Jasper is why they elected me. That's why I'm the mayor. If you don't feel as though that I'm doing that, as a council member, you come in and my door is always open. You can come in and sit down and talk to me. Don't ever tell anybody that you can't talk to me. You, I may not, what, what you're saying, it may not be, what?
Oh, you ask me to respond to that?
No, I, no, no, that's, that's, no, that's, that's nothing, I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to say what I gotta say. But you can come in and talk, we can sit down and talk. If you wanna have anybody else available, we can sit down and talk. Any council member can do that. Any citizen, I get people to call me, can I come in and meet with you? Sure you can. But Councilman Barber just said, you know, that, not, we need to be able to communicate, not to come in and say, well, well, no, you can't do this, yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna do better on that.
But don't you think, but don't you think that communication, though, that you're referring to, it would be pretty simple. Follow the rules where it looks followed. We have a meeting, if we're gonna use Robert's Rules of Order, let's use them correctly. If you've got a motion or a second, we take a further process.
Let me say this. We do have our council meeting rules, policy's never seen, Robert's Rules of Order, and I understand what, what you're saying, that's, that's just what that is. Robert's Rules of Order is just like this.
Sure.
It's a guideline. It's not a law. It's not something that you say, you, well, we have to follow these. No, it's not. You're in F, if you're in, if you're a future former, what'd you use, Robert's Rules of Order? You know, you, you, you have to know how, I mean, you know, you, you follow the policies and procedures, and that's, that's what we're gonna have to do.
But we're gonna use those.
Parliamentary procedure.
You said we were gonna use.
Parliamentary procedure, no, 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 that's how we, we get our guideline, we get our rules from Robert's Rules of Order, that's, that's how we, we make those.
I know, but, yeah, so, I mean, if it's a, if it's a, if it's a guideline, and it's where this should go, you shouldn't, you shouldn't bend it to how you want it to, to benefit for you. If this man makes a motion and he gets a second, then he should have the rights to be able to get the votes, whether he gets it or not. You can't deny him the opportunity to get a vote because you don't like the motion in the second. That's bending the rules, the rules of, of Robert's Rules of Order to your liking. Doesn't matter if you like it or not. Everything that goes on the council, you're not gonna like it, I'm not gonna like it, nobody, it's the same, gonna like it. But at least give the person opportunities, either, either votes or not. All, it's all we say.
I just think our SOPs, we ought to follow them. If we're gonna get a second, we should follow them. And if we're not gonna use them, that's fine, we can follow that.
I'm just saying, everybody read, let me ju, just make sure you read this and understand what it says.
I do understand that. I understood it.
Just make sure you read it and understand what, what it is, and what the policy is for making motions. You gotta make sure you understand that.
I understand that, and I, and I understand Robert's Rules of Order.
I just wanna make sure that we all understand.
But I don't think they get followed when we have meetings.
I know a lot of them that don't get followed, but that's, that's what I'm saying. Everybody, please, read this, as councilmen. We, we, we need to read this.
So, I just wanna get a stand, so, just understand. So, you saying, proper way is, if someone makes a proper motion, whether you like it or not, and they get a, and they get a proper second, you would allow them to get the, to get the opportunity for them in the council to vote on whatever.
We're just, we're just discussing this.
No, no.
That's something that's gonna happen, I'm happy. We're not here to ans, ask questions, ask questions. This is just something that we here to discuss.
We're not making a motion.
We're not making a motion, we're just discussing, we're just discussing. You wanna voice your opinion.
Can I finish my sentence?
Let me, let, let me say this. You can make, you can talk, you can discuss, you can make your opinion, but you're not asking, if you wanna ask this man a question, that's not what we're here for.
Listen, what I'm, what I'm saying, listen, I'm gonna make it clear for you and anyone else listening, I'm asking, leave this tape, we don't have to leave this tape with emotion, go get it, leave it with understanding. I'm asking, if someone on the council, doesn't matter who it is, make a proper motion and they get a proper second, will you, whether you like it or not, allow them to get the, to have the opportunity to get the votes? Yes or no?
I'm not answering any questions, we're here to discuss.
We're just, I'm listening, listen, we're discussing, but as me.
So, if it, if it follows the, let me answer your question. You want me to ask, if it follows the procedure, sure.
Alright.
If it follows the procedure.
And, alright, second, if anyone.
If it follows the procedure.
Yeah, alright, that's, they can move past, right? If anyone on, on the council wants to put an item on the agenda and they get the proper signatures and it follows the proper guidelines, will you, whether you like it or not, will you allow it to be on the agenda for either an action item or a discussion?
Let me say this. You keep saying, no, you keep saying whether I like it or not. It's not whether I like it or not. It's whether it works in the benefit of the city of Jasper.
Right.
I have to make that decision.
It actually says, it needs a criteria.
If, if, I think it meets the criteria for the city of Jasper, to meet, for, for the people, for the people.
Alright, 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 so, so, so since you say that.
I have to make sure it's gonna benefit the people in the city of Jasper, not just the person that's putting it on there. It doesn't matter if it's Councilman Sample, Councilman Barber, uh, the Council, Councilman Holmes or anything. It has to benefit the city of Jasper and the people.
Guys out, he's asking a simple question. Would you read the order, so is Councilman Schultz?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't disagree with him, it's in black and white, what it says you as the mayor can do and what them as the council can do. Whether you like it or dislike it is irrelevant. If it meets the criteria, and Attorney Ratcliffe was here, he can attest to this, you have to follow what we have on paper that is in black and white, even if it fails with the vote or doesn't get enough votes. It's a discussion, put on the agenda how you see fit. But this is where we get hung up, in this area like this, we gotta get past this. It's, it's one fifteenth, but Councilman Schultz is accurate. You know, don't ask the question how you don't want to, but follow what's in black and white on paper, so it keeps us out of jam alone.
Please, and I'm gonna reiterate this, what Lieutenant Hadn't just said. Mary Lane, I consider her friends. I'm gonna be honest with you, you're not listening right now. David Schultz and I, Councilman Schultz and I have had disagreements. I agree with him a hundred percent on that right there. It's, it's, it's two criteria to get something on, on to the council. It's very simple. And either you take a vote on it, or you don't take a vote, you discuss it, you don't discuss. But I think it should hit that, it should hit the, the agenda to be discussed and talked about, and it should be discussed and talked about as men. This right here is not gonna work. This is not working.
And this is what happens.
Mary Lane, I, I consider you a good friend of mine, but I, 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 I don't be around the bush. I'm, I'm shooting straight forward. Listen to these men, because I'm sorry, but they are right in this. Councilman Barber is a hundred percent right. I've not heard anything out of Councilman over here. Listen, we got two councilmen on this floor right now that are having disagreements. Y'all need to step outside and, and, and work this out as men and get this thing moving forward, please. But I'm sorry, I think these two men are a hundred percent right on the way the agenda should go.
I, I agree with that. I did not say, I did not say, not, not to take you off, but I didn't say that I did not agree with that, but, like I said, and I agree with what Councilman Schultz read. He said, the mayor will exercise his or her best judgment in determining if items received for placement on the agenda meet the criteria. I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I talk, I understand what you're saying, I'm just saying.
Let me say this.
Could you define the criteria for him to.
Yeah, because, because, the reason why I say this, because everyone is on council. They all ran a campaign on different issues of what they all personally would like to see, help to see, right? So, if we're all around our own ideal of what we want to see, why don't you give us opportunity to try to get those things to become reality and vote on it? I don't know what your personal agenda for the city is. That's, that's you. Everyone has something totally different, right? So, my thing is, if it's not yours, allow us to express what we, what we wanna see in the city as well. We're not all gonna have the same agenda, we're not gonna all have the same project to see the same thing happen in the city. But at least let us have a voice and let us work amongst our colleagues to try to make things happen. And if it passes, it passes, if it doesn't, it doesn't. I've been on the council with you as a council, right, a council member, and a lot of things that we have now, you didn't wanna see it, right? But as a mayor, you shouldn't run around with this authority as if, I don't really know what you got going on, but it just seems like it's, it's, it's power, right? And I'm just telling you that, if you want the council to work together, allow everyone to individually be who they are. And if it doesn't fit your guideline, that's cool. We're not gonna mash. Everyone is not gonna get along. Me and him, we're not gonna get along. But at the end of the day, I respect you as a man. I'm never gonna disrespect you, right? So, all I'm saying is, allow everyone to go through the procedures, try their best to get on the agenda, and whether you like it or not, allow us to be able to vote, because when you put things on the agenda, you want us to vote for you.
See, I have to agree, disagree with one thing you're saying. You keep saying whether I like it or not. It's not, but you have to understand, so.
You want to finalize it.
You have to understand one thing, and I'm not, I'm not gonna raise my voice, but understand one thing.
Listen, no one finalized, no, listen, hold on, no, hold on, hold on.
Let me finish, let me finish.
I need to know this. No one at this table can finalize, no one at the table can finalize nothing but you. You're the last one of the things, right? So, it's, so it's with you. You're the one that determine what goes on and what doesn't. It, you're the one that does that. So, when it comes to the responsibility of hap, making it happen, it's you. If we do what we are required to do, it's on you to meet us halfway.
But it doesn't matter whether I like it or not.
But at least it was, but, 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 hold on, but, but, but why hasn't nothing been on the agenda? But why, hold on, why hasn't nothing been on the agenda that we require?
I've already explained that.
Why?
And how many keep times I have to keep explaining?
I'm asking him why.
I have said that.
Why? Cause it doesn't fit your, it doesn't fit the city.
The city of Jasper.
Alright, 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 so, so, hold on, so, 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 right, I get that. So, but you allow Mr. Sample to put on the agenda, the second month he was here, so, you wanted him, I forgot what the item was, maybe you corrected me. He wanted us to give the million dollars to the Pervig and give it back to the, uh, reduction. Also, another item was, he wanted to.
But you didn't think that would benefit the city of Jasper?
But that, that's his opinion.
I just asked you, I asked you.
But what I'm saying, that's what he.
I'm only asking you, that's what I'm saying.
I don't think it benefit the city, but that's my, that's my opinion.
You just said you don't think to give a million dollars to the people of the city of Jasper on their utility bill, that does not benefit the city of Jasper.
I have my opinion, you don't have to agree with it, but it's my opinion. And this.
I, I'd like to.
You're absolutely right.
I, I need to.
You're absolutely right.
But this is what my share of problems came back from. She said, you really think, I got, one of my officers down there, uh, that's like I told you. Zena, you ain't seen, he say nothing. You ain't seen, he said a word. Back and forth, we, we said, I got no vote.
What we need to do is, we, you're absolutely right, we haven't got any further as far as, boys.
I think we can, I, I, I think that we can, you can go back and study that, see what criteria is, I think we're on the same page, I think it might look different.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say something for you, Jim.
Chair recognizes, uh, Stan K.
I think this was a, a, a very powerful meeting. I don't think it's had the results initially that we thought it might. But I think that the fact that concerned citizens, employees, business people, and they've all sat in this room together for the season that we have, and I, I wanna encourage the council to continue to do some format like this, because personally, I think the peace officers speaking, they, they're, I don't know if y'all know this, but one of the most important positions besides a minister in verbal communication and nonverbal is a peace officer. They have tremendous authority and they have to make snap decisions a lot of times. Without those cameras, before they had cameras, it was even more difficult, I'm sure, but they stood up, three of them, if you've been here with us, and spoke, and they've been eloquent, what they said, I, I agree with them. Ninety-eight percent, I wish I could have video Detective Ednats, what he said, and put that on, on YouTube, 'cause that was excellent, but I, I wanna encourage y'all to, uh, to come together again in this format. I heard everything he said, David, I heard everything he said, Rashad, I heard everything the mayor said, and I think you're on high on top of what you gotta agree to disagree on. I think, I think it was eloquent, and I think this format was wonderful. I wanna encourage you to do it, Jim, thank you.
Does anyone else have anything to say before we adjourn?
One thing here, uh, I just.
Chair recognizes.
Thank you. I just, I appreciate the peace officers, chief. And, uh, communication to me is one of the best things in the world, and before you come to the city council meeting, you need to communicate. You need to talk to each other. Don't wait till you get to the city council meeting, and I'm sitting out in the audience, and y'all are up there arguing and looking, uh, ignorant. Do it before you get to the city council meeting. Settle the odds before you get to the city council meeting. Talk to each other. Don't walk by and say, uh, I don't wanna talk to him, he don't talk to me. You make any effort to talk to each other. I don't care if it's the mayor, the city councilman, or whoever it is. You say your door is open, and they wanna talk, let them talk. And don't, don't be hesitant. If you got a problem with the mayor, I believe in, if you got a problem with you, I got a problem with you, I'm gonna come and talk to you. I'm not gonna wait until I get out and fuck you. You have to talk to each other. Communication and understanding is the best thing in the world. And that's what you need to get before you get to the city council meeting, and the public is looking.
Thank you, Ms. Raspberry. Dave, the motion? We adjourned. Thank you, guys.